So at 6:30, we will open the meeting for Tuesday, August 3rd. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as may be amended.
So moved.
Is there any...we have this gentleman first after the Select Board and Citizens, so there's really no place to move you up to. All right, so I'm in favor of accepting the agenda as amended. Please say aye.
Aye.
As presented, not amended. Meeting minutes, do you want to do them one at a time? Or do the group, since we've already gone through them?
Yeah. I'll start June...make a motion to accept the minutes of June 15th.
Okay. The...I did not have anything on those.
Yeah, okay.
In favor of the accepting the minutes of June 15th as presented, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the minutes of June 17th.
Again, I don't have anything that we haven't already talked about. So, anything else?
Um, no.
Okay. I'm in favor of the minutes of June 17th as presented, please say aye.
Motion to...aye. Motion to accept the minutes of June 30th.
Okay. Again, I...anything I had, I brought up before.
Yeah.
So, I'm in favor of the minutes of June 30th as presented, please say aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the minutes of July 20th. Ah, the fireworks discussion, Megan, just...so, this one I have to say out loud because it's not, um, number 11.
Yeah.
Um, the second sentence, these fireworks complaints are different from the loud noise complaints the police are investigating. The third sentence, the fire chief Steve Finer...
Reporting in progress.
Sorry about that. The fire chief Steve Finer stated that individuals can buy Class C fireworks without a fire roll license. First, Steve Finer is not the fire chief.
Right.
Um, he is a, um, citizen, and we don't normally put every single thing in that a citizen says.
Well, he's on the fire department. He was fire chief, but he was voted out recently.
But I'm not sure if that's really true. I mean, we could have that Steve Finer stated that individuals can buy Class C fireworks. I don't know if Class C fireworks are allowed to be bought.
Should I just exclude it then?
No, I think we make a notation that we need to look into this.
Yeah.
So that we get the proper information out to people.
Right, I'm not sure which class.
What class they can buy. But it still comes down to, without a permit, they can't put them in their car and drive them away.
Right.
So, um, but this part, the way it's stated, is okay. We need to look into it a little further.
Right, okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so I'm in favor of July 20th as presented, please say aye.
Aye. That's it, right? Was that as presented, or you were taking the fire chief off? We took fire chief off.
Oh, I'm sorry. As it was amended. Well...
To Megan, he's the fire chief.
Was he fire chief at that time?
Last week?
No.
No. So take fire chief off, Megan.
All right.
And then we'll look into the Class C or whatever.
Different classifications.
Okay.
Do we have any Select Board concerns that are not on the agenda?
No, not right now.
I'm good here. For those of you that are tuned in or here in the audience, and we do have you on the agenda, is there something you would like to bring up that's not already listed on the agenda? If you do, please notify us by raising your hand or somehow...
Waving.
Waving if you...well, we can only see four people, so...
If you raise your hand or speak up if you have something underneath Citizens' input.
Uh, we have Mark listed twice for some reason. Well, maybe he's on his phone and his computer.
Ah.
Yeah. It's okay.
Yeah.
All right. I don't see anyone. Is Lucretia here for Board of Liquor Control?
There is no liquor tonight.
Okay.
There was an outside consumption permit, but with...it's tied to an addition and a zoning permit, so we will be presenting it on the 24th. They're opening on November 1st, so they have...
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're just going to make sure all that's...this is the Opaínos.
Yeah.
I'm dating myself, I was going to say the Alpine.
Opaínos, yeah. Okay. So, good evening. We are up to Green Mountain...I'm guessing by your shirt, you're here for Green Mountain National Forest.
You have guessed correctly.
All right, thank you.
Do you want to come a little so people can hear, or it gets recorded, or whatever?
Move over one, how about that?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. Um, I try to get around to the Select Boards on a regular basis. It's been a while since I've been here in Killington, just to give a quick update on things that are going on in the Green Mountain National Forest that may impact your town, or that you might be interested in knowing about. And there's a big one right now going on. The first thing I'll probably talk about is the Telephone Gap Integrated Resource Project. I'm not sure if anyone on the Select Board or on the call tonight was able to attend the July 14th public kickoff meeting. It was attended by quite a few folks, about 95, 96 folks on the call, to talk about this proposed project that we're working on. It's a multi-year project, and I'm going to give you some maps here. I got more maps than I got audience right now.
Okay.
But I'll leave some maps here with you, and I'm also going to give you one of these copies. It's the landscape assessment, it's kind of the initial phase of the project. I'm going to give you both of them at the end, and one could stay here in the library, and one could go over to the Town Hall in case the public wants to come look at it. So, um, this is a landscape scale project that we're in the development of at this phase. So the Green Mountain National Forest has what we call our forest plan. It's our land and resource management plan. It's similar to a town plan. It lays out goals and objectives for a set period of time, usually 15 years. Our forest plan was signed in 2006, so we're right at that 15-year mark right now, and it probably won't be renewed for another seven to eight years. And in it is guidance for, you know, standards and guidelines that we need to put in place to protect resources, and also those goals and objectives, things that we're trying to accomplish within that timeframe. And one of the key ways that we achieve the forest plan is through these things called integrated resource projects. And they identify, usually at a sub watershed level. What's interesting about this project is that it contains two sub watersheds because we're on both sides of the spine of the green. So we're in the Otter Creek, and we're in the Champlain watershed, and also in the Connecticut River watershed here, the Tweed and the Otter Creek watersheds. And, um, over the past two years, our resource specialists have been out kind of pounding the ground, trying to get a sense of what's it like out there. In our forest plan, there's this identified desired future condition for all resources. What, after that 15-year project planning period, what we'd like the national forest to have achieved, kind of what we're shooting for, that's the desired future condition. So they're out there looking at this piece of land and trying to assess, what's the existing condition look like out there, and how does it differ from what we would like it to look like? So if you look at the map, and I'm sorry that it's not on the screen, if I had joined electronically, I would have been able to display it, but the maps will be here. I'll leave this pile of maps here at the library for folks to pick up. You'll see this, it's kind of many colors, a map of many colors, and those colors are different management areas, and the best way to think about management areas is like zoning districts. Different things are allowed and disallowed depending on the management area you're in. So this is the landscape that we're looking at. There's a small portion of Killington in this project area, and we don't have any plan at this point. All we're doing is assessing. There's no proposed project or anything like that, so we've just clicked from the inventory and assessment phase, which is where our resource specialists were out there gathering information, into the public engagement phase. And we've held a few public meetings now. We had the big kickoff meeting, and we've had several other virtual meetings related to specific resources, recreation, wildlife, timber, ecology. We're going to have an upcoming one on carbon, and carbon accounting and sequestration. And once...and the primary goal for the public engagement is to get the public's ideas about what they think should be done in this landscape, or in many cases, should not be done in this landscape. So I'm just here presenting tonight so that the town has...is on the same playing field as everyone else. We want to make sure that the town is fully engaged in things that we're going to propose in Killington, or potentially propose in Killington. As I said, there'll be no...there's no specific proposed action right now, but by the fall, we will have a proposed action, we'll have developed a proposed action. There'll be two public comment periods available. One, probably right around January of this year, and then a subsequent one, probably in May or June, as we get our final environmental assessment done. We have to work under the National Environmental Policy Act to be able to approve this project. So this will be run through that process, with plenty of opportunity for public comment. There are a couple of things that initially we are thinking of that would take place in Killington, some of the initial opportunities that we see. One is related to the Sherburne Trails. There's likely a connection that will be proposed to connect the Sherburne Trail to the Velemon Trail, which is a statewide mountain bike system. So right now, the Sherburne Trail is kind of an isolated pod, but we want to be able to connect it up to the Velemon, so that it's kind of in...so if you're riding the Velemon, you could ride over here, ride the Sherburne Trails, come to Killington. That's one thing that will likely be considered. We are...we will certainly consider a site plan for Deer Leap, mostly a kind of a traffic flow plan for Deer Leap, which is, you know, Deer Leap is right on the cusp, right on the town line, depending on where you are. At Deer Leap, you're in two different towns, but it's seeing heavy, heavy use, so, and it's getting a little bit trampled up at the top, so we want to look at that and see if there's something that we can do to protect resources and kind of guide traffic. We also consistently have people get off the trail and find themselves precariously on an edge there, so that we want to define wayfinding much better than it currently is. I'm going to talk about the Killington Pit separately, but the Killington Pit will probably also have a proposal coming out of the Telephone Gap Integrated Resource Project.
What is the Killington Pit?
Killington Pit, you...I'm going to start redirecting my phone calls to the Town of Killington instead. The Killington Pit is right across from the Sherburne Trails. It's an old...
So it's the old rifle range?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know it was called as the pit.
Well, to us, it's a pit because we don't manage it as a range, so we don't refer to it as a shooting range or anything. We just call it the Killington Pit. So there'll be some proposals...
You don't need to send any calls our way. We get enough on that.
And I have a question?
Yes.
You mentioned connecting the Sherburne Trails, which are on Route 100...
Yes.
...to Velemon.
Yes.
Now, what kind of distance are we talking about to be able to connect the trails?
To connect the trails, you're probably three to four miles of trail to be able to connect it.
And would this be going towards Pitts Field?
It would be going up towards...it would...the route is as yet undefined, but the route... the most likely route would be going out towards Rockwell Road, kind of working its way across towards Rockwell Road and out towards the South Pond track, because it looks like Ralston Rest. It looks like that's where the Velemon is going to come down through along the spine, so it would have to head over in that direction.
Looks like Rochester down into Stockbridge or whatever...
Yeah, yeah.
...to Pitts Field.
Through Pitts Field, and then up over to South Pond, and that's somewhere in that South Pond vicinity is where the connection would come in.
Okay.
Can I also ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Here, Sarah.
Regarding that, so we are building, or we're fundraising to build a trail off of the Pesky Karen Trail that's already at Gifford, with the idea of getting closer to Velemon. So, I missed the beginning part of this. Is that something you guys are already fundraising for, or how is this connection...how do you think the connection would be made between the Sherburne Trails over on the Gifford Wood side and the Velemon?
Yeah, so it would come off, that connection would be off of Pesky Karen somewhere. It would come...it would go off of that trail out towards South Pond. I mean, it's as...I don't have the route...we don't have the route planned yet. I mean, there may be a line on the map in...with the Velemon in their planning, but we don't have a route. We're not...we are not fundraising for it. We're going to do the analysis and the approval process, potentially as part of Telephone Gap, and then we would look to work with partners and our own internal appropriations to be able to fund it.
Okay, wonderful.
How long does something like that take from your analysis to actual?
It depends on how readily available the funding sources are. So the Velemon has been, like, some of our partners up in the Rochester area, what was formerly Rasta, now Ridgeline Outdoor Collaborative, they've been pretty successful in getting some grant funding to be able to build four to eight, seven, eight mile sections of the Velemon, a piece at a time.
Right.
It really is dependent on the partner's ability to raise funds, and of course, we have the Great America Outdoors Act funding that is available to us. We haven't been successful in securing trails funding through that program yet, but we're very hopeful that that federal funding will be continued, and it's a competitive funding source internally in federal government, so we have to apply for that funding. But something like the Velemon would likely be very competitive, and I know that the Velemon Organization and the Vermont Huts Association have been working with the congressional, Senator Sanders, Senator Leahy, Representative Welch, to try to seek...they used to call them earmark funding, but specified funding coming out of appropriations for construction of the Velemon as well, so that could contribute to that as well.
It sounds like maybe Rec Committee needs to get a hold of Chris and set up a meeting and a...so you guys can talk together.
Yeah, because we're working towards the similar thing. We'd like to connect to the Velemon, and we...so...
Yeah, Sarah, let's meet and talk, make sure that we're not working at cross purposes, and make sure in the analysis that we do as part of Telephone Gap would cover any connection that would cross federal land.
Wonderful.
That's exactly what this public engagement process is for. So, see, we made that connection already tonight, so that's great. Deer Leap, Sherburne Trails, I think those are the two big things that I think would be in the Telephone Gap Integrated Resource Project related to Killington. That's not to say it would be the only one, aside from something to do with the pit, and I'm going to get to the pit in a second.
I have one question before.
Yeah.
Why is it called Telephone Gap?
Ah, the $90,000 question.
Is it because it's a telephone line area?
There is a gap along the spine of the green mountains between Pitts Field and Chittenden that is Telephone Gap, and there's two stories that I've read about and heard. One is that that was the location of the first telephone line that ran between Pitts Field and Chittenden, like, out of Rutland. It went up over that gap, and there are insulators there. You can find insulators in trees. The other story is that there was a logging camp up at the height of land, close to the height of land up there way back when, and that was their line of communication back down into Chittenden.
Okay.
So we're going to flush out the real story, and it'll be told when we reach our final... the final assessment, environmental assessment, the story will be told in the document. There's a little bit in here right now.
I know. I was going to say, my phone works fine.
Yeah. I think you fixed it over the last couple of years. Cell phone service works better too down there.
They put a few towers up here.
So the Killington Pit, or the range, as some of you might think about it, as we worked last...late last year with V-Trans to get that berm put in front of it, it's a block off the parking lot, because it had turned a little bit...it was getting a little bit hard to manage in there, and we don't manage that area as a shooting range or a recreation facility or anything. To us, it's a dump site, essentially what it is. Shooting is a legal activity in most locations on the national forest, except for a very limited number, like, you couldn't stand at the Sherburne Trails parking lot and shoot in the parking lot, because that's a day-use area. You can't shoot within 150 feet of an occupied area. A trail is not considered an occupied area, but a parking lot is. And a few other things, in a cave. So it's generally, it's a legal activity. We don't regulate it. It's...they're selected by the user. So, at that location, a lot of users have chosen that location to shoot, and it turned into a trash dump, essentially, for us. We were hauling lots of trash out of there all the time, and then we were receiving lots of complaints from the public, varying from noise to the trash to concerns about lead. You name it, we got the complaint. So we worked with V-Trans because it would take a forest closure order for us to prevent someone from shooting there, and then we would have to enforce that. You know, we'd have to essentially have to station somebody there and say, "No, you can't go in there and shoot," and we don't have the staffing, and that's not really...it's not really what we want to do on the national forest. I mean, it's everyone's right to use their public land, as long as they use it respectfully. So the berm was an idea that we had, if we could just defer those people who thought it was easy to go in there, go to Walmart, buy their cheap AR-15 and a whole bunch of cheap ammunition, go in there and shoot it all off in about five minutes, and then leave, and leave all their trash there. If we could dissuade that group of people from using that site, that it might improve. And it seems to be working. That's not to say that there aren't people still shooting there, and perhaps shooting there in that fashion, but the number is much less based on our observations and the amount of trash we're finding there. As a matter of fact, one of our rec staff went there the other day to clean up, and it was spotless. There wasn't any trash on the ground, any brass on the ground, no shotgun shells. Someone had picked it all up and bagged it and had it out by the entrance. We took all the trash away, but I think they were going to come back and get it. I'm not sure who it is. There is a small group of folks that care very deeply about maintaining their right to shoot there, and they've kind of rallied together into a group that's cleaning it up on a somewhat regular basis. So, only time will tell if they continue to do that. Certainly, we will have some action alternatives in this...in our environmental assessment for the Telephone Gap project, we will typically have alternatives, like, we could do this, or we could do that, or we could do this, and we would select one at the end. There will likely be alternatives related to the Killington Pit. Everything from rehabilitating it, meaning like planting it, dumping debris in it, so that it gets back to a more natural state. It's not a pit that we created, it was something that we inherited, I think. It was probably related to the construction or reconstruction of 100 at one point. Or just maintaining it as it is. One thing that will not be in there is maintaining it as a shooting range, because we don't want to manage a shooting range that's very costly, lots of testing involved, and we don't have the staffing nor the funding to do it. But I am pleased to say that it does appear to be, at least from a trash perspective, in much better condition than it has been at any point over the past two to three years. I do...there are a few folks that the commentary and complaint about it has dropped off significantly since the berm went in. I do know that there are one gentleman I hear from regularly in Killington, mostly it's a sound concern now that it resonates up kind of up...
Can you scroll through the names of people?
Up the valley. He's not on the list from what I saw before. No.
I was going to ask if there was a John Ralston.
Yeah. So John, I listened...I've had conversations with John, emails with John, and that's why, you know, that will...his concerns will guide us as we work through the Telephone Gap process. He's not the only one with those concerns. He's just the one bringing them forward presently.
He's been showing up to some of our meetings, thinking that you would be here. So, my part on that, and I actually was in there back in April or whatever. Some friends wanted to go to a shooting place or whatever. Went down there like 3 o'clock in the afternoon. I mean, if somebody picked up all the shells, I mean, they picked up a lot.
A lot.
A lot.
Yeah.
I mean, it was kicked.
He was shocked when he went in there to...because he stopped in to just get the big stuff.
Right.
And he was shocked that the ground had been raked, all the shells were gone, the brass was gone.
What I did notice was, is, because I have other friends that do go in there and clean and shoot, okay? I'm not against shooting. I have rifles of my own, but I go to places that are a lot bigger than that to go shoot, you know, bigger distance. A lot of...I've had heard, like, pulling TVs and stuff out of there and all that, and I think the berm has helped with that, because it's a lot further to look at TV from down at the other end.
Or a corridor.
Or a corridor, or the other stuff. I think most of the...in that complaint, it's really like what you said, like, how do you work this in? Like, no one wants to take away someone's shooting rights or whatever, but going in at like 6 o'clock in the morning on a Sunday, because it's summertime and it's...the sun is out.
Yeah.
I mean...
We've had other locations, there's a very similar situation in Ripton that we dealt with for many years, and we finally did sort of the same thing, blocked the close access off, that eliminated the dumping. And we did put a...some form of a closure order in place, which limited the hours that you could shoot. And the...yeah, the hours, and it...there was more of an issue. Some people were staying overnight at that location, and we had to stop the staying overnight at that location. No one's staying overnight at this location. So we could limit the hours of shooting, and this will all come out as part of this environmental assessment. So the public will have an opportunity to comment on what we propose.
Because that's one of the main things. The other complaint that I hear a lot about is, and I get it, there's a big berm, and I was shocked because there's a big berm where you're shooting into, like, 100 feet off or whatever, back, way back there. But it's over towards the golf course, so some people that are playing golf or whatever, and they think they're being shot at or whatever. Then you got the bike trails across the way, you know, and I think it's just more about getting information out. That's, you know, the timing, limit the hours of when...
Yeah.
And information out that, you know, maybe if it could be, I don't know if the U.S. Forest would say it's a safe place to shoot for others outside of that area, as long as they're shooting towards that bank.
Yeah, I mean, it has the characteristics of a safe place to shoot with that high bank. One of the disturbing things that we've noted is that if you climb up to the top of that bank, those hemlocks at the top of the bank are riddled with gunshots. So people aren't necessarily shooting into the bank, they're shooting up.
Which is concerning.
Which is concerning. And we've also seen a little bit of people turning and shooting sideways. I don't quite understand why, but they do. They shoot like, if you were to walk in, they would turn left and shoot into the woods, and there are some trails back there. So I think there's some, at the very least, there's some education and information that needs to be shared with that user group...
Right.
...there, and also with the folks at the trails, because, yeah, it can be disconcerting if you're going there to mountain biking, you get out of your car, and you're hearing, you know, automatic, semi-automatic gunfire right across the street, you want to get back in your car and leave.
Right, and especially if we're doing a trail from...bike trail from the Gifford Woods...
Different woods down behind it.
And when I was in there, you know, I mean, there was three other groups in front of us there, and, you know, they take their turns or whatever, but, yeah, no, I saw like one group, you know, where they...I mean, it's almost like they, you know, like, start here, tch, 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 all the way over to the fir trees on the right-hand side there. When you say clean, the other thing that I noticed while I was in there, they buy these supposedly biodegradable orange targets.
Yeah.
Are they really supposed to be just left out there?
They do biodegrade. They biodegrade over a long period of time, and it helps if they're crushed. So the idea is if you shot it and it blew into many pieces, it would biodegrade. If you miss and it just lands on the ground, it'll take a long time for that to disappear.
Or some folks just nip it and it falls.
Yeah, same thing. It'd take a long time for it to biodegrade, but it will ultimately. We will often just crush them as we're walking through, picking up trash, rather than pick every little piece up. We see a big fragment or something, we'll just crush it.
But once again, I guess that's just giving out education of...
Yeah.
If you're in here and, you know, and it's just because it's biodegradable, when it's safe to go out, when you're done, you know, crush them.
So that's...I think that's the nuts and bolts of the Telephone Gap project. Those kind of...those three things will be in the...most likely be in one of our proposed... one or more of our proposed actions, and we're very open, from the town's perspective, to get other input in. I will, you know, certainly be back to share, as we get closer to developing a proposed action, what that proposed action looks like, so that you're aware of what's in it. There's a few other things I'd just like to touch on. It's busy out there, and you probably see it if you drive River Road. The forest is very busy. It was busy last summer, it's busy this summer. Thundering Falls is a very, very busy place. Hopefully, there has...I haven't heard of any specific incident on that road, although I do know that people kind of stand out in the middle of the road. When they're there, they're gathering, talking, and they're not thinking that, oh, this is actually a through road that people drive, and maybe drive at a higher rate of speed than they should drive. But we're experiencing heavy visitation at all of our recreation sites presently.
Because that is, where Thundering Falls is, that's US Forest land, right?
Yes. Narrow crossing, we have very little land in that particular spot, but yeah.
Right, because the concern that we've been having with the highway department and everything is the amount of parking that's happening on the roads.
Right.
And if there's any way we can look at, you know, if there's any space we have to be able to add some side road parking on that side, that if we had to get a lease or something, that we could get the people off the road, because what they're doing is they're parking on both sides.
Yeah.
And then we can't even pass vehicles through.
We, I'd have to look at the ownership right there to see how wide our swath is, because that's just the Appalachian Trail Corridor crossing there.
Okay.
But the town, I mean, you would have your right of way that you could operate in, you know, you could push out there.
Well, the issue we have, and I don't know where your land ends, if it's only that corridor, it might be state land. The issue becomes, yeah, we could deal with our right of way, but there's too many wetlands also located, we got to shift up or down a little bit.
Yeah.
In order to get some parking area.
Maybe if we got the US Forest involved in it, we don't have to go through that.
Oh, no, you do. Well, if it's, if it's, if it's us, if it's the National Forest System land, we would, and we were going to impact some wetland in some way, we'd have to get an Army Corps permit, we wouldn't need the state permit.
Right.
But we'd still need the Army Corps permit.
Right.
But let me look and see, and I'll snip you a message and say, oh yeah, it looks like there's a fair amount of space there, or no, there's no space at all beyond what we have.
Okay.
I'm thinking it's pretty narrow at that point, because I think it's wider back and it narrows at the road.
Right. Okay.
The Vermont Youth Conservation Corps, I don't know if you've seen them out and about around here, they've been working on the long trail, or the Appalachian Trail at the Thundering Falls area over the past few weeks.
Yeah.
So that's just more of a heads up that they're out there doing great stuff in the And I think the last thing is the No Town Track that is currently owned by the Conservation Fund across the street up here, up where the, the road, that No Town Road goes through and the power line corridor goes up, that is, any, any moment now will be transferred to the Park Service. A big tract to land up there, I think it's 300 acres, something like that, to expand the Appalachian Trail Corridor up there. And then once it goes to the Park Service, you blink your eyes and it becomes National Forest Managed Land, because we manage all the Appalachian Trail Corridor land for the Park Service. So that expanded piece of land up there will become National Forest Managed Land. So if there's ever a concern related to that, you can reach out to me. There is, there is a, the vast trail, the snowmobile trail crosses that, but also the Vasa Trail, it's the first ATV trail that we have on the Rochester Middlebury District of the Green Mountain National Forest. And we've already been in touch with the club, the something, Quad Runners, Route 100 Quad Runners, or something like that. We've visited up there, they have a side trail, and then they have that one crossing that mirrors the vast trail. So again, if there's any ever, any complaints or concerns about that up there, just, just let us know. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Do you have contact information with you, cards or anything?
I do, I have my card with me, I can...
Great. I can get a couple of, because you want to give one to Sarah as well.
Yeah. Oh, Sarah's got my number.
Okay.
But, yeah, here. And then I'll give you the rest of these maps, so you can, you can put them out in the library or wherever you think is the appropriate spot to put them. And I'll give you the second copy of the landscape assessment as well. Happy to answer, like I said, answer any questions, but I know it looks like you have a pretty full agenda.
I think you hit everything. Deer's leap.
Yeah.
We have a lot of people that are going up there.
Yeah.
We've had a fire there last year.
Had a fire there last year, yep. You had, we had it up there last year, you had it somewhere else this year, right?
Down at the end of the River Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw that, I was like, oh no, not again, when I saw the smoke, I was like, oh no, not again.
And then people getting injured up there, and then our guys have to going up there.
Deer leap.
Deer leap.
Yeah, yeah. So that's what, we're going to try to solve that through some, well, there'll always be people getting injured, but we're going to try to solve that issue of people getting off trail there.
The bike trail with Sarah, and then the shooting range, or as you call it, the Killington pit.
Killington pit.
The pit.
Not the Rutland pit.
No.
No.
The Killington pit. We have our own pit. Thanks a lot, sir.
All right, thank you very much. It was nice to see you all.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Sarah, I'll be in touch.
Town plan.
Zoning regulations.
It's the, yeah, the Planning Commission, the Town of Killington Town Plan Amendment Report was an update to the, the town plan.
Right.
Can you put this up on the screen or no?
I think I can, I think I have this one. I need to go to the end. There it is. Town plan.
Can you see that, Sarah?
I think Sarah's out.
Oh.
Chuck, can you see it?
So this is what the...
So the, basically, the, the first part of the discussion is all of the items that are listed is to the, the statutes that allow this, that require, give you the requirements for the town plan. But basic, the basic changes, the highlights. This is, where to go?
Connect.
Are we talking the bullet points?
Yeah, well, they're, this is the rules for making the change.
Above the second paragraph, the principal purpose of the proposed town plan.
Town amendments is the priority of Town of Killington is to connect East Mountain Road with Killington Road, reconstruct Killington Road together with municipal water and sewer infrastructure, and to utilize a TIF district to finance these changes and to reduce zoning setbacks along Killington Road. That's basically the changes that were done. We do have a Killington Road master plan later on the agenda to discuss, but the goal was to get the town plan to match some of the projects that we have planned over the next couple of years. And tonight is the public hearing for the Select Board.
Right. So this year, do we need a motion to accept it from the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission approved it on June 9th, I believe.
Right.
And then forwarded it to the Select Board to have their public hearing, and it was, it was noticed right after the June 9th, and the first meeting after, that was the 30 days, about the 30 days after was tonight.
Okay. So we need to adopt.
Basically, we just ask if there's any comment, and if not, then we can make a motion.
I've read it, and they were, so I'm going to make a motion to adopt the Town of Killington Plan, Town Plan Amendment Report from the Planning Commission.
Okay. Just semantics, do we adopt it or accept it?
You adopt it.
You adopt it, okay.
Either way.
But you're adopting it, it's becoming, it's going to be, you're amending the town plan.
Yeah, accepting it means we accept what they're doing, but we're going to adopt it into the town plan.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we have the right wording in there.
Okay.
Do you have anything that you want to add to this? Because it looks pretty...
If we do, then it has to go back to the planning.
Yeah, then it starts all over. So it's just if, if there is any questions or things that you would like clarified or addressed, we would then send it back to the Planning Commission, otherwise, and then we'll take public comment.
So this was to get a couple of things in right away, and they are actually working on the zoning and the town plan. So there's going to be further, further stuff coming in later on.
This is, this is basically to get our town plan to match all the grant proposals we're trying to work on in the TIF, is to make sure it matches the proposals that we're making.
Right, this is where Ed Bove and Chris Carr and them all met up and said, get these, these things changed fast so we can move ahead with the rest.
Correct.
And then they're working on the zoning and the planning also.
Correct.
So my motion stands is to, to adopt this.
Okay. All in favor of adopting the...
Do you want to ask, make sure nobody has any comment or question? This is the public hearing.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Anybody? Anybody have any questions on this?
Just one question, this is Roger. How have the setbacks changed along the Killington Road?
They haven't yet. This is saying that we want to look at them.
So this goes back to where the Select Board has been giving underneath COVID-19 relief for parking, for, for, for outside consumption and everything else, and every time Chris or Howard or even Brian, the Garlic, and Phil at the Lookout, everybody, we just say we're going to give it to you now on a temporary basis as we do the survey to make sure everything falls in. This is just the, this is just the town plan, it is not the zoning yet. And the zoning would have to then show what the setbacks are.
Okay, so the setbacks haven't changed at this time?
No.
No.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I don't see anything else up there. Okay, so seeing none, all in favor of adopting Town of Killington Town Plan Amendment Report?
Please say aye.
Aye.
And we have our reappraisal order.
The town received last week a notice from the state that is ordering the Town of Killington to conduct a townwide reappraisal for property taxes. Our CLA was at 87% this year, and, but our coefficient of dispersment went over the 20% range, so we now qualify. So basically, between now and 2024, we are required to conduct a townwide reappraisal. The listers are preparing a response letter, appealing at least a portion of the decision to try to get the extension for the date that it's asked to be required. I mean, next year, we're going to have a brand new Grand List software. We're in the process of looking at new land use software and things of that nature in order to get all of that implemented and a, and a townwide reappraisal. That will be a very tight schedule, so we're asking for a little relief from that. We will have that out within the next 10 days or so, back to the state for their consideration. Then they will give us their ruling, and then we will have a cer, a set amount of time to tell them what our plan is for conducting the reappraisal.
So do they have parameters that the, that our town plan has to fall within, in terms of how it's done?
Basically, it's, it's timeframe, it's not so much conducting the methodology.
Timeframe, but not how.
It's timeframe and, and, you know, we're hiring an outside consultant and we're going to have to put it out to bid, and we would expect it to take place during this timeframe. You know, we have to put that type of information in it so that they would then be able to, to approve or disapprove of our plan.
We have to give them our plan and they do approve our plan, so in reality, your question is...
My question was, did they have a plan we were supposed to have?
No. No, we have to, I mean, they kind of say whatever, but...
Well, they do have certain parameters, I'm sure.
Yeah. So back in December, we received a letter from the same group.
Mm-hmm.
That said we were at 90, 87% CLA, we were at 20.3.
Yeah.
For the coefficient. Back then, it said if you contest, you had a chance to contest. Did we contest?
Well, in my conversations with the listers, the listers went through the process, we had a conversation about is there a way we could appeal and say that some of these numbers were out of sync or something of that nature. They were unable to find any appealable information that we thought we'd be able to appeal, so we were unable to appeal it, and then we got this notice later.
So we're going to just basically send them a letter with them, because this thing here says number two, respond in writing within 30 days to this order if you are contesting these findings.
Correct, well, the find, part of the findings is the date. So we're, we're saying that, yes, we understand we have to do that, but we don't think the date will be able to be met.
I mean, 20.3%?
I know, it's going to be worse when we get this December's letter.
No, we're not going to go there. This is the letter here, if we got it this December, then it would push it out to December, to, to April of 2025.
Right.
Just, you know, I've sat in the, the meeting with you and the others on, with the new software or whatever, and I hope we just write up a really good letter explaining that, you know, a lot of towns are now getting these letters. The Town of Killington is actually agreeing that we need to do a reappraisal, but with them changing NIMRIC to something else, and then with us going to another software also for, you know, that, you know, at least ask for 26 or whatever.
Yeah. Well, that's why they're arguing the timeframe, not the need to do it.
Right.
Yeah, that, that, the goal is, is to see if we can get the extra timeframe.
Right, so, okay, thank you. I mean, we don't have to do anything on this, it's just information.
No, this is information.
Just to let everybody know that it's going on. Okay. And Chuck is here for our short-term rental update. Is there anything, Chuck?
Yes. So quickly, you have, there's about 56 registrations that are still pending. Most of those have to do with fire safety follow-ups, which I am pursuing people with.
Yeah.
At some point, we will be reducing their capacity if they continue to stall with getting their fire safety.
You have to call on them.
Right, as soon as Chuck does his intro, I was going to call on him.
Okay.
Okay. I'll be quick. You know, about, it's always going to be, the registrations are still trickling in, we're at like about 590 right now. Next step in enforcement will be to notify people that they have improperly advertised their units, either over occupancy or over bedroom count. As of right now, there look to be about 240 ads that are advertising too much occupancy. There's about 130 with advertising too many bedrooms. So if there are STR owners out there, please make sure your ads are in compliance or you will be getting a letter shortly. Thank you for your cooperation.
Okay. Gerald, do you have your hand up? Can you unmute yourself?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can now.
Okay. This is my first time on a Zoom meeting here, so I'm trying to figure out how to work this thing.
Well, it's working.
Can you see me too, or?
Yep, we can see you.
We can.
So, yeah, so I just came on, on the advice of Chuck. Are one of you Chuck? With the green shirt?
Uh, that's me.
No. Chuck is zoomed in.
Okay. So to, to appeal my fine that I got for late registration on my, my, for short-term rental So I, I appreciate that you guys have lowered the, the fine, you know, substantially, but, you know, it's still, it's still quite a bit and, you know, it's a hardship for me to have to come up to mind to pay it. And, you know, I'd like to appeal and, and see if we can just, you know, waive the fine altogether, just on the fact that, you know, I just, I wasn't trying to not comply with it, and I just wasn't aware that the requirement was in place until one of you had contacted me through Airbnb my, my rental listing and, you know, got a message in through there, and then I became aware, and I, we even called, you know, called the office and Chuck helped me get signed, you know, get registered and all that, so, you know, again, I wasn't trying to skate out of doing it, as soon as I became aware of it, I did it immediately, so I'm hoping that you could help me out here and waive that fine entirely.
Chuck, I have a question for you.
Sure.
We, we sent out how many letters to this specific house?
Uh, well, there was, the first one was, you know, the warning with two weeks to comply, and then there was a certified letter that stated, you know, you have seven days.
And then the certified letter, did we receive the certified letter back?
Uh, that, that did not bounce, to, to my knowledge.
So, so it was, it was, it was, it was accepted at the house that we sent it to?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Yes, Chuck, you advised me to comment on that, okay?
Yes, Chuck, you advised me to comment on that, okay? I, I'm not sure if the letters had been going to the Thirty-Spoon Street address, you know, that's my house, my full-time residence, but as I mentioned, you know, we had to put together a, basically put together a living arrangement apart for a while, so I wasn't living in the house for a while. And, you know, I explained to you why, and, you know, so I wasn't getting the mail. I very rarely get any mail at the house, maybe not even like once every couple of months, like actual mail that I need, you know, I'm not talking about junk mail, but, you know, it's, you know, most of my stuff is all paperless, so I'm not really looking out for any mail, so I really didn't, you know, it's kind of in haste. I hadn't made any arrangements to get my mail or look out for mail. It was important, I wasn't expecting any mail, so none of it was forwarded to me. I just wasn't, wasn't even thinking about it. So, you know, I just didn't get it. And, you know, obviously, you guys know that because somebody reached out to me through Airbnb. Now, that person wouldn't have done that if they believed that they were reaching me through the mail. So, you know, and again, as soon as I was aware of it, you know, I did it right away. I said, like, right that moment.
So Chuck, can we pick up on that part of the conversation? I believe that was you that was reaching out on the website, correct, as the zoning administrator interim?
Yes. And Jerry, you know, as soon as he found out about it, he did take action to, you know, remedy the situation, you know. You know, it was very timely matter, I believe it was the same day.
But what I'm, what I'm getting at is that's what you did with pretty much anyone that you could through Airbnb.
Uh, no, I constantly, you know, ping people on Airbnb, asking them if they're registered with the town's STR program, because there's still some people that, you know, haven't, and it's the best way for us to track them down.
Right. What I'm getting at is that you didn't ping, as you say, on Airbnb because you didn't think the person was not getting their mail. You pinged just because you were pinging to try to get more people to comply.
Um, I would have to look through my records. I might have, I might have contacted Mr. Cavalllo because, you know, his property was identified through, you know, lobbying revs advertisements and tied in with, you know, one of the certified letters we sent for fines.
Right.
So I believe I had sent him a message advising him that, you know, his property's in violation and is currently being fined.
Right.
Yeah, not until you sent me.
Yeah, that was the first we heard of it. So, you know, I think the first set of my contacts, I tried to focus on people who we were finding, just so that they are aware, you know, that this is going on, and they really should take action because the fines accrue.
And then it came to us, and we lowered it down to?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred dollars from over ten thousand dollars total?
Uh, I don't remember how much. I don't have, what the total number was, it's either ninety-four hundred or ten thousand something, I believe.
Okay. I mean, to me, I'm sorry, Mr. Cavalllo, but, you know, there's only two of us here, but, and I'm going to, you know, be me, but we seem to have had a lot of people that didn't get any mail, but then they got, for some reason, we know we have a copy receipt from a lot of folks that they did get the registered letter. I feel that we were fair in what we did, and I can't see changing it.
I'm not in favor of changing it.
Yeah.
You know, as Chuck just said, that, you know, when he did contact me through Airbnb, he acknowledges that that is the first I knew about.
No, he didn't say that. He did not say that, Mr. Cavalllo. He said that, that's what you had said, but we have something through certified mail that we sent you a letter certified, and somebody accepted it. I know if it was my wife or children, because I couldn't stay in my house, I believe was your argument, because of COVID, and I'm sorry that you have some reasons why COVID, that you couldn't stay at the house, but my wife or children would have sent the letter to me. I think we were very fair on it, and to be honest with you, we fined other people, and they too immediately responded back to us, and they received anywhere, the ones that immediately responded were fined fifteen hundred, and then we had a few that took a few weeks, and it was at twenty-five hundred, if I recall. So I, I'm sorry, but, you know, I have to stick to what my decision was back then for my vote that was put up for a fifteen hundred dollar fine.
And the reason for the reduction was because of the response?
I didn't understand, but, you know, based on, you know, the kind of unprecedented situation, and, you know, and I explained to Chuck that, you know, my wife is in a very, very difficult situation because she is, and, you know, runs addiction clinics and is an addiction research scientist at the Yale School of Medicine, and her job just got completely upended attempting to track down all of the addicted folks that would normally be able to go to the clinic and give them their medications so that they're not out on the streets getting a lethal dose of fentanyl when they run out of the medication. So she was working, you know, eight days a week, twelve hours a day, and, you know, she wasn't, you know, sort of a dutiful wife staying home sorting mail for her husband. She was very busy with a very, very difficult, extremely difficult job, you know, essentially, you know, saving thousands of lives out there, getting these people their medications when they weren't able to get into the clinic. So, you know, I think it's difficult to say that, you know, she should have been more attentive to my mail that might have piled up with, you know, a couple months worth of junk mail and one letter from Killington that should have been considered important and forwarded to me, right? I mean, you know, things just weren't as they normally would be for us.
Mr. Cavalllo, there, Mr. Cavalllo, I'm sorry, but there are a lot of people, but you make it sound like a bunch of mail. It was a registered letter that was signed.
Certified.
It was certified. So if my wife was working, you're bringing all this up, and so I don't know if you know me, but I'm Jim Haffan. If you're going to, you know, like, this is just me, and if my wife was, wife was working eight days a week, twelve hours a day, she wouldn't have signed the certified letter. Someone, someone, someone.
There was no, you have no signature from that letter?
Well, somebody accepted the registered, the certified letter, okay, at your house. It was certified. I have to stick to that. I mean, if you don't like it, I'm sorry.
You're saying that it was signed. It was not signed. Nobody signed.
Okay. We sent a.
Because if they signed, they would have known.
We sent a certified letter, and it was accepted.
Well, accepted just means it went into the mailbox.
No, not if it's certified. It has to be accepted.
So I can check the receipts to see who did sign for it, if it was signed for, if that helps this matter.
That certainly would, because then.
It's in the office, so I don't have access to it.
I appreciate your wife saving thousands of lives and everything else, Mr. Cavalllo, but we have a process here. We sent out many letters. It came down to a certified letter that went out. The fine at the time that the letter was out was ninety-two hundred dollars. It was occurring two hundred dollars a day from there until the day that you did come in compliance, so that's why I say it was over ten grand, and we lowered it to fifteen hundred dollars. I'm not moving from that. I'm sorry.
Are you the only one?
I said me. I'm looking to the person to my left.
But I'm not changing it either. The reason for the reduction was the response once Chuck finally got in touch with you in person. That's why it was reduced and not kept at nine or ten thousand dollars, whatever the final amount was.
That doesn't sound very harsh penalty for just being late on registering for something?
Not when the program's been instituted for months. We're not talking a couple days here.
Yeah, but this isn't something where, you know, I had some kind of a public nuisance or some kind of a sign that was in an illegal spot that was causing a disruption to the town. I mean, this is just a brand-new program.
No, no, it's not.
It's a zoning violation that carries the same process if a sign was put in incorrectly. It is actually a zoning ordinance and a zoning rule that has the same penalties as that.
It's a little bit harsher than the noise, a noise complaint at somebody's property, I mean, a little noise or whatever. Noise is a zoning violation after ten o'clock, but registering your house for short-term rental or not registering your house for short-term rental is a violation twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. I'm sorry, I mean, you know.
Okay.
It's pretty harsh, guys. That's a pretty large sum of money to, you know, for me to have to come up with just for, you know, being late on registering, and I wasn't aware it was necessary. It's a brand-new program, you know, something you just put in place.
November first, November third of 2020.
That's pretty new.
Well, it was actually prior to that, right? It was prior to that that the town spoke about it, then it was forced by a vote, and the voters, the voters said, put it in place, and in reality, the select board lowering it from nine or ten grand to fifteen hundred is pretty gracious of what the voters, by a two-to-one vote, had said, implement this now.
Well, it's.
Was there any thing you could help me out?
I think we already did.
At this time, we're not in a position to change what we already discussed and voted So at this point, we're going to move on.
Chuck, do you have any other updates?
Um, as far as what, this particular case?
No, 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 short-term rental.
Were you done your update?
Something?
Um, no, I guess we do need to follow up on that other property with the failed aesthetic.
Yep.
I don't know if we need to talk about that right now.
No, that's actually something Steve will, we'll have to make, set up a time with Steve to come in and bring him up to speed.
I have one question.
Health officer issue.
Just a quick note, letters were sent out to the four properties yesterday that we are considering abandoned.
Okay.
Just FYI.
I have, I have a question on your numbers. There was two-hundred-and-forty listings that were for more than said for occupancy and a hundred-and-thirty for more than the bedrooms. Was that what you said, or was it the other way around? So the hundred-and-thirty for bedrooms, is that part of the two-hundred-and-forty also?
Um, it's, it's, there's probably a lot of overlap there. I don't know exactly.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. There's not, there's not three-hundred-and-seventy?
No, no, I'm sure there's definitely going to be overlap, but I just don't have that number.
All right. Thank you, Chuck.
Okay. Thanks, Chuck. We have a vacant position. Chet, our town manager, had sent out or posted, whatever, for people of interest to get in touch with him, and can you tell us how many we have?
We received four notices of interest via email and/or phone. I mean, do you want me to name?
Yeah, I mean, it's popular.
We had a letter of interest from Mike Miller. We had a letter of interest from Chris Carr, a letter of interest from Don Martin, and a phone call of interest, because he was unable to send the email in time, was Roger Rivera. All of them showed interest. At this point, the select board would have to determine the methodology they're going to move forward with in making this election. You know, whether you have more questions, or you don't want to have a discussion with the applicants, or if you just want to go into executive session and see if that's necessary.
Well, to discuss them, we should do it in executive session.
Yeah, but once you start discussing their.
You put everybody's name up for now.
I'm just looking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. So it's just a matter of you deciding how you want to go about it, and if it is something, we're just going to go into executive session, review the applicants that we have, and determine if you can decide from that group or if you need additional information.
That'll happen in executive session?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anybody here that wants to say anything while we're on and on this topic?
Again, nobody's noticed anything.
Okay. All right. Killington Road Master Plan.
So, Master, Road Master Plan?
Killington Road Master Plan. This is a, basically, an overview of what we anticipate Killington Road will look like on its next reconstruction. We are planning to start that process, those phases of process in the twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe, and we wanted tonight, it's before the select board for adoption. I did not print that item because it's forty-four pages.
Right. But you sent it out to us.
We sent it out, and everybody, and it's been posted for quite some time. If there's any questions or comments, you know, this is the time to do it. The question, the select board is charged with adopting it as a master plan at this point. You know, my only reservations relate to its compliance with complete streets, because it, some of the changes that were made in the last grouping, you know, have modified it, and, you know, we can adopt it, but I do want to have it reviewed by AOT or somebody because they're the ones that are going to have to. We have to, every project we do is a road reconstruction in a state, meet and have the state, we met all of the requirements of complete streets, and I want to make sure that they're okay with it, so when we start making the applications, that we're going to be able to get some grants and things of that nature.
So I think there's a few people on here from the Planning Commission. I think I saw Ricky's name.
Ricky's up there. I saw Ricky. Chris Carr's here, Lisa's here.
Yeah. So, I mean, once again, it's like, this is just, the way it was put between Chris, Steve Selbo, and myself on this committee of the road was from VHB, this is just a conceptual whatever, and when it gets down to that, at that point, it will have to get redefined.
Right. And that's okay. I just want everybody to be aware, there's some review that we're going to have to still do on.
Well, there's a ton of review. I mean, there's, you know, we, Chris, we were told from Devin that basically, this was just like a thirty-thousand-foot document, correct? Is Chris there?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah, this is, this is just something for us to work with, a document that puts us in a direction, and, you know, we also came out of it and said, we're hoping if we can get the first section looked at right away and, you know, take it from there. We know we're going to have to make a lot of adjustments as we go through this. We don't even really know where the Killington Road is, and we have to get a survey to figure out exactly where we are, so we can make sure it's, you know, esthetically pleasing and works with all the businesses on the road.
Right. And what we do know where most of it is, I mean, it was done by Robertson-Franzoni. Ray Page has all of the survey material that was done, part of the original, the design plans that took place in the eighties. So, and that was stuff that we sent to VHB at the end. I don't know if it's been incorporated into this, but I, what I'm going to do is talk to Ray Page.
That's, that's where we're coming from. We spoke with VHB. It's not. So this is a thirty-thousand-foot document to adopt. They don't, he said we'd have to get in here and survey the road. He did say, though, that we meet the complete streets. We, he said, that's what you want, complete streets. There may be another term that, the Village Center and a whole bunch of other stuff that we may not meet, but we weren't going after Village Center. So, I mean, I think, well, I'm just going to make a motion to adopt, because this is at the point, right? Tonight, so to adopt.
To adopt the master plan.
The master plan, knowing that there needs to be real design work, and that's where a lot of this other stuff is going to come from, but.
This is giving us a starting point.
Yeah, it's thirty thousand feet. Now let's get down to the road.
Well, it's conceptual, as you said.
Yes.
And from there, we will get into the actual.
Right.
Of, you know, sidewalks, everything else.
No, adopting this is fine. All I wanted to do is. All I wanted to do is point out, we, we have a lot more review to do.
And as Chris said, one of the first things will be to survey the road, uh, because I think we need to know exactly where the right-of-way is before we can talk about setbacks and things like that, that have to do with businesses that are along the road.
Or putting a sidewalk in.
Or a sidewalk, or...
Yeah, and what I will be doing is talking to Ray Page, because he did get all of the documents from Robertson Franzone. They have all of those surveys that were done. And we'll start there, and then we'll have to, we'll have to look at possibly...
But it's not in this, it's not in this document.
No, 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 that's not, and that, we had made sure they had those, so that they could put them in, and they're not in evidently. So, what we're going to want to do is put out an RFP ultimately for the first section of road for design, and get the surveys included.
Let's do that next. I'm making a motion to adopt the Killington Road Master Plan as a conceptual plan.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep. Is there anybody tuned in, zoomed in, I should say, that wants to add something before we actually vote? And I don't see anything. So, uh, all in favor of Jim's motion to accept the Killington Road Master Plan, to adopt?
To adopt.
Uh, please say aye.
Aye. Now, let's talk about the next step. The next step, we've been saying, is Phase One is from Route Four to Anthony Way. But at the same time, we need to make sure, and certainly, that's surveying everything, but in order to make sure that everything is aligned, we need to make sure that, who you were speaking about with Franzone and the rest, that it actually, we have to get that on a map to make sure what we're doing is fitting in. So not just surveying the Route Four to Anthony Way, but make sure we have everything else going up the Killington Road, right?
What I was, what I was going to recommend, and this is, is that we get, because it'll cost us well over $100,000 to survey the whole thing. I mean, from scratch.
Right.
The goal's going to be, we got to do it in segments, and we should get to West Hill Road, so we know what the first section looks like. And then we, because, I'm talking about for on-the-ground survey. We want to incorporate all of the existing surveys we already know exist...
Right.
In the plan to make sure that they align. We would be fine-tuning that. Right now, I think we're more than fine-tuning that we have to do to get there.
Right.
So I want to get those incorporated into the plan, and then, I, then, then confirm them as we go.
And my concern is with, you know, for $100,000, is you survey just to West Hill Road, and then all of a sudden, we find out they're above West Hill Road. Something takes, for some reason, there's more development from West Hill Road up. That, that's where we really need to know where everything is.
Well, we know we have, like, the section that was the Schoolhouse Road to West Hill was just surveyed, when they did, we did that sidewalk project.
So then, Schoolhouse Road up.
Then we got it, so we did, and I, I want to go look, because I know we have those other surveys. So, what, what I want to do is incorporate all of the stuff we've done over the past, and determine what sections we have to go out and redo.
So when are we meeting again? August?
August 24th.
Okay. So, by August 24th, can we have this information to us?
I will, I can get a copy of all the plans that we have. Having them all on one map, we'd have to hire somebody to do.
Right, okay, and...
But I will have a proposal for that.
Right, and, and where would the funds be pulled to, to do this?
Would we basically be going back to the, 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 like, Tuminus Road Restricted Fund, which is where we're doing the master planning, to get ready for the Killington Road? It would have to come from that, that line item.
And August 24th, we'll have that line item in front of us.
That's correct.
So can we...
And a proposal for going ahead.
And a proposal for going ahead.
Yep.
So can we push that to August 24th?
And the other question is, do you, should I be putting together an RFP to hire an engineer to do design work for that first section? Do you want, I mean, is that, how quickly we want to move on that?
I, I think that was...
I think we want the basis first.
I mean, there's, well, there, no, we, we should be doing them simultaneously, because if we get the RFP, the engineer's going to need it. If we can give them all the survey information, that just streamlines their process.
So what the Planning Commission came out with, and Ricky and Chris and Lisa, um, as the Planning Commission, uh, not Planning, Plan, the Town Planner, um, their recommendation was to ask the Select Board to move forward with Phase One.
Right.
And Phase One being the Route Four to Anthony Way. And there is some concern also, I believe, with some of the Planning Commissioners, about the rest of the road. But you'll have all that ready for us by August 24th?
What I will have is, I can have, I can identify the information that we have...
Right.
And what holes we need to fill.
Right.
And then say, "Let's put out an RFP for an engineer to do the actual road design."
So, I mean, an RFP is not saying we're actually going to do it. Can we put out, can, instead of waiting till August 24th, can we just say, "Let's start putting out an RFP for Anthony Way down to Route Four?" And an RFP for the whole road to be surveyed?
Not before August 24th.
Okay.
By September, yes. I'm, well, I'm away next week, so that would make it more difficult.
No, 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 no.
I'm saying, to put the RFP together is going to take some time.
But, but, but if we come here August 24th, then, then it's, I mean, it's only an RFP. That's not costing us any money.
But if you don't write the RFP correct, I'm just saying, we got to make sure we cover, dot all r's and cross all t's, because that will determine the scope of work that we're asking for.
So let me start over again. I'm going to make a motion to move forward for an RFP for surveying from the whole road, one separate one, and then an RFP for, um, Route Four to Anthony Way with survey, okay? Because it's two different areas or whatever. And we're just making the motion now to give you the go-ahead. And if it works into your time, then when it works into your time, get it done.
Okay. Now, you just said survey. When I was talking, when I was talking about was, I was talking about getting a survey, getting you, the survey information that we have and know what we have to do the RFP, but also an RFP for actual engineering design.
It's what, what really...
That wasn't in your motion, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, what really concerns me here is, is that we've been working on this VHB thing for two years now, okay? It's two years. VHB, I mean, it's a public hearing, whatever. VHB was an RFP, and they were supposed to get us all this work. They were supposed to put in, they didn't do it. Chris Carr has his hand raised. They didn't do it. So I just want to get us moving.
Oh, no, no, I agree with you. I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm looking at the logistics side of it, and just saying, they're two separate functions, unless we're going to hire the engineer to do the survey as well.
I'm saying, let's put out an RFP for the whole survey of the Killington Road. That's my first motion. Then my second motion is going to be, put out an RFP for what is called Phase One from Route Four to Anthony Way.
For an engineering, for engineering design.
The engineering design.
Right, okay. That's what I thought, when you said it, they were both said survey, and that's what I got confused.
Well, the, the actual... Chris, you have something?
Yeah, my, I guess my point is, is like, if Chet has maps, okay? Like, I wasn't aware of the fact that, um, the Killington Road was done from Schoolhouse to West, West Hill. Okay, and that, last time was redone in the 80s, when they filled part of the Summit Pond in. But that's been surveyed. Now we have an idea of where the, where the, you know, town right-of-way is there. So if, I think if we give it a little time and let Chet put all the maps together, we could save ourselves some money without having to survey the entire road.
Right, and, and I'm saying, I, we could, I could probably do that definitely by the end of August, and then in the beginning of September, we're going to work.
I'm just saying, for that...
Yeah, but I think that...
And I'll have this, I'll have them prepared.
I'm just making the motion now, and if you find that it's all good, then it's good.
Right.
If you find out it's not, then you have our approval.
Well, okay, and if you're not asking for it back on the 24th, you're saying, "Get the RFPs out," then that's what I'm going to do. And I'm going to find out what I have, write the RFPs, and then you'll get it, and I'll let you know when I send it.
Right. You're going to come back with more information, but we're giving you, if you need the permission to go out for an RFP, you have the RFPs.
Now I'm clear, thank you very much.
All right?
It's a motion to do something...
And Lisa, I think, has her hand up or her mute.
Sorry, I can't seem to do the hand thing. I don't know why. I just have a question, Chet. On the survey, when, when we have it in-house, or when we have to go out, don't we also need the survey, just not just of the road, but we also need to look at, um, some degree off the road, right? Into the adjacent properties? Because I think one of the issues is, we don't know, we might know the width of the road, but we don't know if, you know, a budding property owner, for example, has extended their business, or their parking area, or whatever.
Well, yeah, that's, that'll, once they...
We need to kind of know that.
Correct. Once they, see, the thing is, is there's two levels of survey. There's boundary survey, which is the conversation we have right now, where we're actually looking at property lines. The engineer will have to do what's called a detail survey. Once they have the actual boundary survey information, they're going to have to go out and, and identify where all of those locations are related to the boundary survey.
That's, that's a critical piece that we really need to know.
Yes, that, that's correct.
Right.
And, and, and that will, that, yeah, that'll be the step two, and the question just is going to be, how much of, of Item One do we still have to do? That's what I, that's what I have to determine quickly.
I just wanted everyone to understand that it's not just the boundary survey, it's really understanding...
No, it's, it's called a, it's top, top...
Especially when we go up...
Topographic and detail survey is the second piece.
Yeah, so you know where the motion stands, right?
And I know exactly what I need to do.
All right, and you know where Lisa's coming from. It's not just the road, it's the boundaries outside of the road.
Well, that will definitely be part of the engineer's piece, because they're the ones that have to draw it to make sure it works with everything.
And you understand that the motion on the floor is just, as long as you, if you find paperwork, like Chris says, it will save. But if you can't, then we have to go forward.
Correct.
Okay? Chris, do you still have your hand up for, or you forgot to take it down?
Who are you talking to, me?
Yeah, your hand's still up, we weren't sure.
Oh, sorry. I was hoping Lisa might be able to take it down from there.
All right.
My other, my other question, though, is, is like, is, I mean, we could get an RFP going for the design fact of the first section, like, right away, because they're going to want us to...
Correct, that is correct. They, they will be happening simultaneously.
It's like a player piano.
Yeah, they're, they will be happening, happening simultaneously, Chris.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Is there, uh, is there anything else?
Anyone else?
Someone that knows how to raise their hand?
Or speak up.
Okay. Well, they would pop up if they did, right?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to have the town manager move forward with RFP and survey. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And you understand what that means, right?
Yeah, yeah. And we've discussed it to where he knows what's going on there.
Okay.
Okay. You have a warrant to collect taxes?
Yeah, that's the, the warrant to, to the tax, to the collector of taxes, which is me, um, that authorizes me to go out and collect the monies that we have sent tax bills out for.
Well, make a motion to, for the town manager to be the collector of taxes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do you have a report at this time?
I do. Library, the, the Association of Rural Small Libraries, which is a national organization, had sent out some questionnaires and surveys, and our library, and Jane, were selected one of the three, uh, top rural libraries in the country. And Jane is flying to, oh, I'll probably get it wrong, I think it's Oregon, um, later in about a month, for three days, that she's going to be doing a presentation nationally for the, the Killington Public Library. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to what that accomplishment.
Congratulations.
Yeah. And, number two, um, the town of Killington, we received a, uh, visit from the state for an inspection on our transfer station. We did pretty well for the most part. We have a couple of minor violations, which we're addressing. But it surrounds the, the issues that we're having with the bears and, uh, and, uh...
Well, the bears aren't there, the, the, the fluorescent bulbs, but...
Yeah, well, no, but the issue is, is we got, we're talking about how we're, the, the ability to protect and, and keep the smells down on the, on the food scraps. The other was, the, we did have some fluorescent bulbs on-site that were not stored in the way they would choose. And the other was, um, some of our electronic storage, they were addressing. But for the most part, we're doing well. We've addressed those concerns, and I think we're heading in a good place. We will be reevaluating, as we are working on our new solid waste management facility certification, um, with some changes that will be made for the, for the November 1st timeframe. So we will be bringing that back before everybody soon.
And again, really, really picky.
I'm saying, do you need to put in, like, containers to control?
Well, the issue...
Bears and fluorescent bulbs and things like that?
Well, fluorescent bulbs we're not allowed to have on-site.
Right.
But this go...
Can we have them on site?
We can't have, we don't accept, we don't accept hazardous material.
Okay.
But it goes back to where they didn't show up one time because of COVID or whatever, and I had four bulbs in my office, and I didn't realize they were in the corner of the office, so, um, we didn't get fined for it, where like Rutland City, whatever, got fined 30, 40 grand. I mean, they, they're really coming down on transfer stations, and, um, Gleason Road is sending somebody up to help go through stuff. But I mean, it's like, I have no control of what somebody throws in the garbage compactor in a black bag...
Right.
And when it squashes it, and then all of a sudden, a cardboard box appears, or a soda can comes in, it's actually a violation in their, their view. You know?
And that's the issue, and that, and that's why there, some towns mandate that you use clear bags, so that you can see it and say, "We're not," you can't put that in there. I mean, it does, you know, that's like, we really want to go there.
And have people separating things out or whatever. It wasn't a fine, we're moving along.
Yeah, we're in, we're in an okay place, it's just an FYI that we're...
With your, with your impetus, we cut a lot of the returnables and cans separated.
Yeah, we're actually doing very well. I mean, as far as getting things where they're supposed to be, there are some people...
Hey, we did great, we didn't get fined.
That's correct, you're correct. So...
Killington Mountain House update?
Killington Mountain House, uh, the property sold, um, on Friday. They settled on the thing. We have, I have, our, our attorney is sending a notice of enforcement action, which was then going to be, uh, matched to the lawsuit, which the, the applicant is the one who filed as an appeal. So we're attaching the, the town's enforcement action. It still goes to the individual and the LLC, and the enforcement action will keep that active. So our attorney is taking care of that, and we are waiting to hear a response from that issue. But as it stands right now, the, the court proceedings are still in, in process. We have, on the summary judgment items, we have prevailed on all of the, what I would consider strong arguments, which is the grandfathering and the things of that nature. There was just one other item that was raised that was in our meeting last December, when, when we were having those conversations. So we're just waiting to hear where we stand. But the, the House did sell. It is currently compliant. They have an Act 250 permit, they have a, a state wastewater permit, and they have They have an Act 250 permit, they have a state wastewater permit, and they have applied for a new town zoning permit that actually complies with all of the rules.
So, it's a three-bedroom house currently.
Correct.
And in the summary judgment, that's not really, or in, in the court case, it's not finalized yet, because it's been dragging on for over two years. It states that they can go out and get an upgraded septic system, right? And they still need to come to the town to be approved for those, that zoning of going from a three-bedroom to a four or a five-bedroom.
That's correct. And they, and they have made that application, and it had been granted.
They have the application in.
Application for four or five?
Four.
Okay.
Okay, so it's for four bedrooms?
Because in that piece that came out to us, it said it okayed four, but 12 people.
Right.
Right.
So, that was my confusion.
But that's just, that's the state and the, and Act 250.
But what I'm getting at is, is that, you know, this thing, to me, and I'm not a lawyer, but I've been in business, and it just seems like it's dragging along for a reason.
Right.
Okay? As far as I'm concerned, this is a three-bedroom in the town of Killington until this is resolved. We don't have to give the fourth bedroom. The, 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 the court document that we're waiting for to be finalized states that they get from the state, but they still have to go to the town to get the approval.
I will, I will check that question with Kevin.
You know, and, and I'm just, you know, I mean, the people that bought the house, I don't, you know...
And won't there's also the bearing of the fact that they have, they are having a new septic system put in?
Correct.
Have some bearing on what they can apply for in terms of the fourth or fifth bedroom?
Right.
Yeah. So, but they can't get it till they have the new system.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, they can't have until they get the new system, but they still got to go through the town for the thing.
Correct.
And what we've been asking for is, everything in summary judgment is agreeing with us just to end this.
Right. They granted summary judgment on everything but one item, and that was the, the racism piece.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we're just waiting for the, the finalization. COVID did definitely shut down the courts, pretty much, so that also cost us quite a bit of time.
Okay.
So...
Thanks for the update on that.
Thank you. Do we have other business? I do not.
White lines, the crosswalks.
I'm trying, every day.
Okay, can we just get our own guys, then?
I will ask, we will check that. Yep.
Okay.
Kurt Peterson has his hand up. Kurt, can you unmute yourself?
Nope.
Good.
All right, there you go.
Okay, so, you're about to go into executive session about the four chats who are interested in Chuck's seat.
Correct.
And I'm curious as to how we'll find out what your, your decision might be then.
You'll have to wait for us to come out of executive session.
Yeah, well, once we have our discussion in executive session, we will come out with some type of motion forward. And we don't know what that motion's going to be at this time.
All right.
We don't...
That's the answer I'm looking for.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the only other white, I just get asked all the time, the crosswalks, the crosswalks.
Okay, so, and again, Kurt has his hand up, but I think he's...
No, Kurt, he just left his hand up.
I just forgot to put it down.
Yeah. I make a motion to go into executive session. I guess, what is this for? Personnel and...
It's personnel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to go into executive session at 8:03.
Are we going to leave, or do you want?
Yeah. Well, can we go somewhere else? Come out of executive session at 8:12.
8:12?
From executive session. Taking a look at the four, I appreciate everybody coming in and asking, giving in their, that they want to step up for this job. I'm going to make a motion for Christopher Carr to be the fill-in Select Board member from now until March.
Okay. And it should be pointed out that with looking into it, he does not have to remove himself from the Planning Commission at this time. Should he decide to run in March, which that's up to him, being an elected position, he would not be able to be in both in March, I don't think.
No, he could stay on, but he, but we get to pick, and he has a choice. So, where's, I think what we're saying, and I'm in agreement with you, is that the Planning Commission is doing a really hell of a job.
Right.
We don't want to, Chris's letter said that he would like to be a selectman, he wants to run in March. I think Chris really has to figure out, like, from now until March, you know, get a lot done now, between now and March, Chris, that you could run for Select Board member. But I think in that, just too many boards to be running on.
Well, if he were successful, then he would probably leave.
Successful, yeah. And then we get, then the Select Board gets to appoint that person after the March election.
For the Planning Commission.
For the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So, the motion is for Chris Carr to fill in Chuck Laffey's remaining time until the first Tuesday of March.
And did you have anything to add?
Nope.
Okay, so we have a motion, and all those in favor of filling the vacant position with Chris Carr, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And...
Don't know if this is a congratulations, Chris.
We...
Condolences. Thank you.
By the way, the next meeting is August 24th.
You'll have to get sworn in by licoricea before that.
Right. And make sure that, make sure that you're on Chet's mailing list for everything that he sends out.
Go home, get mail every now and get to them.
All right. Is somebody in the waiting room? Eli?
Somebody just came in there. Eli, he bumped out, he must have come back in.
Yeah, Eli, you bumped out?
He's not, he came in.
Just be fair to him when he gets in. Eli, you bumped out, and you're back in now?
He might have got...
There he is. Eli, you, you, you left, and then you came back in. We made a motion for Chris Carr to take the vacancy spot. And it's passed.
Eli.
And it's passed.
Do you want to keep these at the town office?
Yes, I do.
So, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn at 8:15.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for...
I want to see...